Let's go call F and A together. See clerk, if you'll take note of attendance. And we'll move on with the approval of the agenda. Are there any modifications or comments in regards to the agenda? All right. Hearing no objections, we'll take the agenda as presented as approved. With that, we'll move into public comments. Real quick, anybody online wishing to make comment? All the way, your connection is fluctuating, just so you know.
It has been smooth for me.
That might not be my connection that's fluctuating. Uh, let me know if it gets worse. If it's headset, I'll change headsets. Alright, let's move on to approval of the minutes. Are any comments or questions in regards to the minutes of November five, twenty twenty four? Alright, here none. Uh, unless your objections, we'll take the minutes of November five, twenty twenty four as presented as proved. Let it be. Alright, consideration claims report dated November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Any questions, comments, or clarifications? Uh, do let me know, uh, as chair, I've received no, uh, comments or questions in email regards to those. And I have no questions.
No questions.
Alright. We'll take, move those forward to council and as approved out of committee. Let's then move agenda to agenda bill twenty four, one twenty one, River, River Trail Property Acquisition Personal Identification Number. I'll let you read it. Who will talk with us? Talk this one with us?
Um, Director Artete. Is, has her hand raised?
Alright.
Oh, thank you. I just got my, sorry about that. I just got my, um, promotion to panelist. Um, yeah, so this is, um, uh, an additional property that's been identified, um, as a voluntary purchase and sale, um, for parcel ending in zero, zero, two, five, addressed at thirty nine, oh, seven, six Southeast Park Street. Um, this is part of the Riverwalk Acquisition Status Map that's attached as Exhibit Three. Um, it's one of the remaining, uh, potential river, riverfront acquisition parcels that the city could acquire. Um, and the city continues to assemble properties to construct a formalized non-motorized trail that follows the edge of the Snoqualmie River through downtown historic, um, business district. Um, this, uh, particular property owner, um, like I said, ending in zero, zero, two, five, um, would like to facilitate a voluntary purchase and sale agreement, um, that's attached as Exhibit Two, to sell the property to the city. So this is, um, a request for, um, council, uh, approval to allow the mayor to sign a purchase and sale.
And, um, this is gonna be fu- funded out of CFT and, uh, and Flood Control District?
That's correct.
And, uh, what remaining, what funding directly from city is there?
Right now, no funding has been identified for the city. Um, so again, we would be utilizing the full grants that are in place with the Flood Control District and CFT funds combined for the purchase and sale. Um, there'd be, there may be other costs, um, not directly associated with the purchase and sale, um, that we talked about before, including, um, possibly using a stabilization grant if we wanted to wait and hold off with demoing the property at the end of twenty twenty five. Um, if there might be no costs involved at all.
Captain Christensen, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I have, excuse me, some comments on the contract itself, the purchase and sales agreement.
Um, sure, I, let's, let's go through them.
Okay, so first of all, section three, this is three point one, due diligence inspection feasibility. If you go down through uh, about halfway through the paragraph, it says, if the buyer's not satisfied with the condition of the property for any other reason, the agreement shall remain pursuant to section five point eight. Uh, but five point in the contract deals with septic systems. I think this should refer to five point nine. Do you see the, the part where I'm, I'm talking about?
Um, I'm just taking some notes. I, I do see five point eight septic systems and fuel tanks.
Okay, perfect. And then a couple of sentences later, it says, in connection with such inspections, buyer agrees to hold harmless and indemnify and defend sellers, officers, agents, and employees. Um, and in any of the, um, excuse me, indemnification sections, it, it doesn't, when it's referring to the city, it doesn't include the normal language that we'd include including things like public officials and things like that. Um, so I would just go ahead and, and double check all the language there. A lot of them also include language about heirs of the city, which, um, you know, obviously be a little bit atypical there. Um, for section three point two funding, it says the sale of the property is contingent on appropriate by the Snoqualmie City Council. Uh, Snoqualmie Mayor Catherine Ross's approval set appropriations, that should, um, I think it should read as contingent on appropriation by the Snoqualmie City Council. Um, there's also a couple sections, section three point three leases and section five point six, which says no leases. It looks like, uh, we should be, um, a little bit more um, I guess purposeful in terms of whether or not there are leases right now, because the two contract provisions are, are contradictory. Um, and obviously we want to know if anybody else is in there. Um, and then again, in five point seven indemnification seller agrees to identify, defend, and hold harmless of buyer, its employees, agents, and heirs. And again, that should probably be public officials and whatever the typical language of the city usually includes. I know that we give a specific language that's typically included. Um, and then for the notices, I saw that the notices for this, if, if there were going to be, um, changes or breaches or things like that, um, it provides that the seller should do service on Lori King, who's with King County. I was a little bit surprised that the city wasn't going to be notified either the clerk or the, the city attorney or the mayor. Um, so we may want to include that as well, just to make sure that if there are issues that, that we're getting served and that we know about them. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you very much for reading it in detail and providing that feedback. I'll start working on getting those amendments.
Thank you.
So kind of same conversation we had in just meeting prior. As you know, so, um, I'll, I'll need a copy of what the changes you're doing as well as kind of a note of here are the changes made and a council move to substitute. Uh, so that we've got this is open public record, and when it changes, we do it in open public record, we change it. So next opportunity will be counsel to do a substitute. And yes, thank you, Kara, for catching that. Any other questions or comments in regards to the agenda bill?
Um, yeah, just a quick thing. Yeah, so then, um, uh, because we're in this transition toward having a new city attorney, uh, just wondering, you know, in terms of just checking to make sure that all of that makes sense and is yeah, the, on the right legalese, et cetera, et cetera. Um, what is the, the process for just making sure that there, the, um, the correct eyeballs look at it before we get to the council meeting?
Well, I think the, our contract with our existing legal service goes to the end of the year, so.
Okay.
So they should be involved in reviewing that.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Mayor Ross.
And is this us? Emily, is this a, um, also King County contract that you're using?
Yeah, we have a King County contract and Lori King is an attorney. Um, then this agenda bill was routed to David for review, um. So happy to, happy to get David more involved in the, the contract and work with Lori to address, um, Councilmember Christensen's comments.
Okay, please do. I, uh, the pickups decided to give me pause. Uh, Councilman Christensen?
Um, we, what we may also want to do is just look at the last time we had one of these come through and just compare the contracts and see if there's any other pieces missing. I had intended to do that, but I ran out of time.
Sure, I can, I can do that with, um, we have the Warren property, um, cycle through in December of last year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, and we're good? Thank you, Director Artician. We'll get on with it. Get to the agenda. With that, we'll move on to agenda bill. Twenty four, one oh seven, biennial budget amendment. Assume Drew, you'll talk us through this one. Or Jenna?
So I'm going to recommend that Jenna talk about this one.
Uh, I apologize, Jenna. I should have, I should have gone with you to begin with.
You're fine either way. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, this is our fifth budget amendment of the biennium. And we have twelve separate budgetary requests as a part of it. Um, in total, this amendment represents an increase in appropriation of three million, three hundred and eighty seven thousand and five hundred dollars. And that's supported by an estimated four hundred and eighty seven thousand, one hundred and nine dollars in recovered funds, grants, and then some other sources. And one important thing to note about this amendment in particular is that it is, it will require a super majority. Um, because we are requesting that we decrease appropriation for one of our classifications. So whenever that happens, we need to have a super majority approve this. And with that said, I'm going to share my screen so that you can look at these amendments and I can just explain each one to you. Okay. The majority of these are associated with an agenda bill or some other agreement that you're familiar with. Um, this first one falls under that category. This is the Snoqualmie Police Association CBA. We're currently working on the retroactive payment, and of course, they are currently receiving, um, wages in accordance with this CBA. We're estimating that we need an increase of a hundred and fifty three thousand dollars for that, and that's considered ongoing. Um, a little bit more than half of that is associated with the general fund and the remainder is associated with the North Bend Police Services Fund. Uh, technically seventy thousand, five hundred of that should come from the North Bend, um, police services fee, but those, those amounts are negotiable and currently under negotiation, so I don't, I can't guarantee that revenue, but we would prefer to have that funded by the North Bend, uh, city, the city of North Bend. The second one is the North Bend Police Services Expenditures and Wellness Grant. This amendment has two purposes. The first is that the police department received a wellness grant for certain training that the city has undergone, and then they'll re- receive grant payment for that next year. So it's money in the door and money out the door for that one. That's about twenty two thousand dollars. The other portion of that is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, currently, our North Bend expenditures are exceeding our North Bend services fee. So we will have to transfer some of their overtime amounts into the general fund, and they'll be paid out of the Snoqualmie Police Department's classification within the general fund, so we need to increase our, um, appropriation there so that we can handle that increase in expenditures. Going down to number three for parks expenditures, these are a variety of, uh, a grab bag of expenditures that were unexpected. The first in twenty twenty four, uh, Parks told me that they've seen an upswing in vandalism. There have been many separate incidents that have required work and replacement of items, uh, repainting, lots and lots of repainting. That's estimated at approximately twenty five thousand dollars. There are some parks ele- electricity upgrades for holiday lighting right around Railroad Park, approximately forty four point five thousand. There are some historical invoices that were paid in the current biennium, approximately fourteen thousand, and then repairs and upgrades related to some park structures for ten thousand. Total for that is ninety three thousand, five hundred.
What, what's a historical invoice?
Uh, so we were billed for invoices from twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. I don't know why they weren't paid, um, but the Parks folks, they looked into them and they appear to be legitimate. They appear that they, we did not pay them, so I don't know if we weren't billed appropriately or, or what happened, if it was just a funny time for the city, um. I'm not sure why. But that's what, that's the meaning of historic invoices.
And Drew, will you, will you look into that?
It takes a while for the video and audio, so yes.
Okay.
We'll look into that.
Customer Johnson, you have your hand up?
Yeah, just curious on the, uh, holiday lighting, uh, for electricity upgrades. Um, so that just sounds like it's, it's more like an infrastructure thing of there's a certain amount of load and we need to have the proper infrastructure there to handle, uh, all of that in a way that is safe and efficient, et cetera, et cetera. But, uh, my point is it's not about, uh, buying forty four thousand dollars in new lights.
You are correct. Uh, yes, around the gazebo, there are new outlets where I don't believe there were any, or perhaps you're correct in saying that they were upgraded to handle the the, um, amperage or voltage, whatever the electrical word is.
I can jump in and, and you're a hundred percent correct. What was out there wasn't to code and um, it was, everything was brought up to code and, uh, placed in a new secure box because we couldn't secure it.
Thank you, everyone. Um, I'll continue with number four, which is, this is the decrease that I discussed, the community development decrease in appropriation. The purpose of this is that we do not want these amendments to have an effect on the general fund, and we believe that we can, um, that currently the community development is, uh, has excess appropriation that we can use in other locations within the general fund. So you can see a decrease of four hundred and ninety eight thousand there. Next, number five, we have transfers to the ERP project fund. This transfer occurred during twenty twenty three, and we didn't notice that it came out of the wrong classification. It should have come out of the finance department, and it actually came out of the ERP project fund. Um, so this is to rectify that so that we do not go over budget within non-departmental, and that's a fifty thousand dollar transfer. Number six, we have school impact fees. These fees are collected as part of the permitting process, and whenever we collect fees, we remit them directly to the Snoqualmie Valley School District. So the one hundred thousand dollars that you see is over and above what we've received, but just in case we receive anything else, we would like to, um, be able to transfer that as we are required to do. These are not our funds. These all belong to the school. Um, we're just custodians for a short time, and so, um, that one hundred thousand dollars that you see is also matched by one hundred thousand dollars in revenue. Number seven is the ARPA fund closure. This, uh, fund is related to the American Rescue Plan Act, and as of twelve, twenty three, twenty twenty four, we should have all of those funds obligated by, uh, those are the, part of the requirements of receiving that money. So our goal with this is to close that fund, and we don't have a good estimate of what our interest is currently. Um, so I've I've gone above and beyond to make sure that we have enough appropriation here that we can fully close that fund and obligate those funds, um, in in accordance with the ARPA requirements. So that's another two hundred thousand dollars coming out of the ARPA COVID Local Recovery Fund. Oops. Number eight is the stormwater remediation recoveries and storm pond cleanup. Part of this you've heard about as part of the budget process. Some of those, uh, the dollars, I believe it was a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars that they needed to clean up storm ponds. A portion of that, approximately sixty three thousand dollars, will be occurring this year. Um, so we would like to, to do that a little bit in advance and have those funds available for stormwater so that they can achieve all of their goals. The second portion of that, thirty two thousand dollars relates to remediation, essentially if there is an environmental spill or if, um, illicit discharge occurs in stormwater, we have to clean that up, but then we also bill the responsible parties. So there is revenue associated with that thirty two thousand dollars where we've recovered the funds that we've spent cleaning up, uh, a, as we're required to. Number nine is the waste reclamation facility phase, phase three. And this, you've seen these, um, it's the prospect contract that you've seen in, I believe it was agenda bill twenty four oh, seven, six. And we estimated at the time that that prospect contract would end in twenty twenty four, or sorry, twenty twenty five, but we are ahead of schedule. We're anticipating that it will all be complete during twenty twenty four, so we are appropriating the entire amount for that contract so that we can um, pay for it in, in twenty twenty four. Next, we have the Eagle Lake Reclamation Basin. This is also something that you've seen in the agenda bill, AB twenty four, one twelve, and AB twenty four, one twenty four. This is also relating to, um, the purchase of land that was discussed in Parks and Public Works Committee today. Uh, this project is moving ahead of schedule, and so we need additional funds to match how we're, um, where we're anticipated to be. There is a chance that that approximately three hundred thousand of this will be spent during twenty twenty five for the purchase of the land, but we are requesting the appropriation as a cautionary, um, move, just in case we are able to close on that land a little bit earlier so that we're not, uh, locked into the twenty twenty five close date. Number eleven is the three eighty fourth Avenue Southeast Sidewalk. This amendment was addressed in AB twenty four, sixty eight and AB twenty four, eighty eight. And we are currently anticipating that all of the stormwater, all of the utilities improvements will be complete as of December first, twenty twenty four. And that would mean that, uh, an acceleration in this, of this project. So we are requesting an appropriation of four hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars to pay for the improvements associated with three hundred and eighty fourth Avenue site, Southeast Sidewalk, and then their associated, associated utility components. The final one up there is a vehicle replacement. This is within Equipment Repair and Replacement Fund. And we, there was a vehicle, I believe it was a fire vehicle that was, um, in an accident and deemed unsafe. We received eighty thousand in insurance and we spent, I think slightly more than that to replace the vehicle. I, I want to say about eighty two thousand dollars, but we're requesting just what we received in insurance revenues um, to replace that. And that is, those are the twelve amendments that we're requesting as part of this year-end, um, budgetary amendment.
Did we lose our chair?
Yeah, we did. Um, he's trying to get back on.
Okay.
That's kind of what I meant about connection forum, unfortunately.
Got it.
He probably can continue. I'm checking to see how he's doing, get trying to reconnect.
Unless there's objection, I could continue on as chair, acting chair.
For me?
Okay, uh, so I did have a question then, excuse me. About, oh yes, uh, the need for the super majority, was that essentially, I think you even said this, but I just had to take care of something real quick. Them, that had to do with the community development decrease in appropriation, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, um. I didn't have anything else off the top of my head, uh, so, um, Councilmember Christensen?
No, that's fine. Thanks.
Okay. Do we want to try to take a five-minute recess to see if we get our chair back, or do you want to continue forward?
I'm concerned he might lose the rest of us at some point, so.
I agree.
And get through the, during the items are, and then the, that's legit and agreed.
Yeah, I think I'm in agreement then. Um, so then uh, let's go ahead and forward this one on to council, and it can't be on consent because we need to take a vote by law, so, there you go. Alright, uh, then that takes us to our next item, which is the city council agenda review. And we'll go ahead and roll through that. Uh, let me know if you have any problems with my audio. Uh, so for that, uh, I don't know if someone could bring it up on screen easily, so we could all be looking at it. I don't know if that's easy.
Chair, I, this is, um, Emily Artete, Community Development Director. While we're doing that, I do have an additional item to bring up for consideration on the Monday council meeting.
Okay, uh, perfect, thank you. Uh, let's go and roll through, and then, uh, when the item comes up, um, go ahead and interject. Okay, so the first thing is the call to order for the roundtable at six thirty. This again will be a havesy kind of roundtable, six thirty to seven fifty five-ish, uh, with agenda approval, special business being the utility rate study, and then adjournment. That sounds pretty typical. Uh, Councilmember Christensen, I'll, uh, also be watching for hands if, um, if you have anything to add.
I don't think I can raise my hand. Um, so we're gonna we're gonna cancel the roundtable.
Okay. Alright, well then we're not gonna do that one. Then we go on to the regular agenda, uh, starting with the call to order in the roll call, pledge of allegiance, agenda approval. Uh, we do not have any hearings. We do have the appointment of a firefighter and a new volunteer EMT. Excellent. Uh, then we will have the city attorney appointment and oath of office. And then no presentations or proclamations currently listed. Uh, public comment, and then the consent agenda, uh, approval of the meeting minutes as standard, along with the claims report. Then we have an interlocal agreement for the renewal of Essequa Jail and the adoption of twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine King County Flood Management Plan and Snoqualmie jurisdiction annexation. Um, just to clarify, that is not actually a Snoqualmie annexation of land. Uh, it just is a very weird word to have used in that context.
I agree.
Yeah, any, uh, other comments on the consent agenda specifically? Okay. Uh, then for ordinances. We have the, uh, certifying the increase in property taxes and the twenty twenty five property tax levy. Uh, this is the standard increase of the somewhere in the ballpark of one percent that we're allowed to do, even though it usually isn't exactly one percent. Um, and then AB twenty four, oh, and those would, I believe, be second reading if I'm not mistaken, correct? Yep, okay. Uh, then we've got twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four biennial budget amendment that we just talked about. Uh, that's a first reading. Uh, so, yeah, so that's the one that I believe we just talked about a little bit ago. And then we have the transportation impact fees, which would be a first, uh, reading, and that comes out of community development.
Can I?
Okay, yes.
Uh, can I interject about, um, I'd like to see if we could add um, a first reading for the adoption of the city comprehensive plan by ordinance?
Let's see, did it go through any of the committees first? I mean, I, I know that we like talked about a lot earlier this year, just worried about uh, the process of going to committee before going to the full council technically.
No, it, it hasn't gone through committee, um, unfortunately, um, it was anticipated to go through as a resolution, and after further consideration and consultation with our city attorney, um, it's being recommended to go through as an ordinance, and we only have two more meeting days before the end of the year.
Okay, we have two council meetings, correct?
Right.
And as an ordinance, we would need to have two readings. So, okay. Uh, I guess if that's the way it's gonna be, then that's the way it is, and if uh, council, uh, wants to send it back to committee, uh, then, um, they could take a vote to do so, if that's what they choose to do. Um, but that would make things challenging. I suppose it could still count as a, uh, first reading, then go back to committee as requested and then come back for a second reading. We've done that in the past. Um, yeah, so I guess just making sure that we're following a process.
Okay, so that would be AB twenty four dash oh nine eight.
Okay. Um, it may not Um, it may not end up going back to committee, we'll let the council decide.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, uh, then we have the Public Safety Committee Report, we have a fire accreditation report, that's information only in the. Past, sometimes we've had presentations, sometimes we haven't, uh, is that going to be a presentation or reading material?
That I do not know offhand, I don't, we, we touched on whether it's going to be a full presentation or not. But also make that decision based on how much time there is.
Yeah.
Mayor Ross. City clerk maybe hopping on to.
I think we just put it on for information only so they can council and public can access it, read it.
I think that's usually what we've done. Okay, uh, there's nothing else from, excuse me, Community Development Committee. Uh, Parks and Public Works Committee has a land acquisition for reclaimed water system improvements. Uh, that would be uh the city purchasing some land, I assume?
The city's purchasing land from the golf course.
Excellent, welcome back, Chair.
Yeah, I'm on mobile network, so we'll see how well this goes.
Okay, go ahead and take over.
But no, keep going, just in case I drop off again, you're doing fine. But just on this agenda bill, yes, we are purchasing property from the golf course to support. Uh, creation of an irrigation system reservoir. To comply with new state regulations on containment of irrigation water.
Thank you. Um, okay, F and A is the uh River Trail Property Acquisition that we talked about tonight. And then uh nothing else, uh, followed by maybe the whole, the legislative priorities that we've been talking about in committees. Uh, my guess is that we'll probably want to take some action to forward that on in the near future. I just, I have one flicker.
Yeah, and I, I wanna talk, uh, well, I'll, in council, we may wanna. I want to consider a different approach, but we'll have talked in.
All right. Uh, then the mayor's report, commission and committee liaison reports as normal and then a uh possible executive session. Okay, anything else from staff or council before we all lose our power?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, seeing none, I believe that is the end of the agenda. Um, so without uh objection, we will consider ourselves adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here.